We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Mo- Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, May 3, 2022. And Item B, Call for a Meeting Set Tuesday, May 24, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve?
Set.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are Resolutions D through H. There's no need for executive session. So is there a motion to approve resolutions and adjourn?
Set.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Boyle?
On Resolution D, I just have a question on that. It says a consideration or action on the 2022 Board of Equalization procedures. In the details, it says that Douglas County is not responsible for any technical difficulties when it comes to citizens submitting their information regarding review. When the citizen puts their information using the online system, is there some type of verification that the information has been received so that they know that it's complete so that they don't miss their deadlines?
Catherine?
Catherine Hall, County Commissioner's Office. There is, and I'll defer to County Clerk Ash to speak to that in detail.
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. So if you submit a protest online, you'll get an email that confirms that it was submitted, and it kind of has like a summary of the details. And then before the email as well, once you click Submit, there'll be like a little confirmation page that shows up that gives you a protest number. The, I believe, main reason why we have that on there is just in case the system, and we'll have support, don't get me wrong, but in case there's people trying to submit protests at 11:30 on June 30th, obviously, we want them to be able to, the system to work, but it's just kind of a, you know, in case something happens that, you know, we're not responsible in case they can't get it in on time at that late hour. But if there's a system or issue with the system, we certainly, you know, we'll work with DOT COM to address it right away, but I think it's more of just, we put it in there in case there were problems at a late hour on the last day.
And then, do you know if we've had issues like that in the past?
We did, 2020, we did.
Yeah, so that's what I'm getting at. Is there a way to, besides just educating folks not to, you know, submit it at the last minute, is there just a way to be sure that we've got the, whatever it takes, the memory or whatever, so that it doesn't crash at the end for these folks that are just trying to do what they need to do?
Well, the background on, in 2020, was, there was, we were kind of the, and I'm sure I'm not using the technical terms correctly, but the system was running off like a national, I don't know, part of it was intertwined like a national system, and unbeknownst to us, there was an update, like a quarterly update this company was running nationwide at 9:00 Eastern and about 8:30 our time, I start seeing emails come in and, hey, I can't use the system. So we changed it so that, you know, so we're not reliant on that system anymore.
Got it.
We didn't have problems last year. I'm hoping that's, you know, the case this year. And then DOT COM has, we've talked to them, and Catherine's been on the calls, where can we have people available to us till midnight on June 30th in case there are issues, and they have told us that they will provide us with that.
Okay.
So, obviously, I can't make any promises, but I feel like we're very prepared to mitigate that issue.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to get details on that to make sure that, you know, folks are just trying to do what they're supposed to do, and then it's a system problem, it's like that's probably the most frustrating thing in the world. So just make sure that we're covered, doing what we can to make sure that folks can do what they need to do. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? There is a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next, we'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item 1, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Corrections Meeting Held Tuesday, April 26, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Set.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next, a citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report from our Director of Corrections. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Enclosure number 1, Administrative Services. After the 10th month of the fiscal year, we are 2,000, excuse me, $2,705,850 under budget. I want to point out that this amount does include ARPA funds, which have been allocated for projects which will span into the next fiscal year, and we are continuing to encumber those funds to apply them for the cost of the following fiscal year. We will likely finish the year slightly under budget. $371,757 was spent on overtime during April. That was an increase of approximately $20,000 from the previous month. The Sanction Center, excuse me, enclosure number 2, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of 17 individuals in community corrections and saved 157 combined bed days. And I haven't spoken about those two efforts for quite a while, so just to refresh everybody's memory. The Sanction Center is using the CJC for individuals who are assigned custodial sanctions from probation. And the Transitional Discharge Center is taking individuals who are within the last 10 to 14 days of their sentence, individuals who we, it might be a little risky for us to take them earlier in their sentence, but we feel like we can manage them for a short time. Those are both bed-saving, and we can also do some work with them, with our reentry teams over in community corrections before they're released. 24/7 Sobriety Program admitted 67 individuals. There were 4,029 breath tests that were conducted. There were 12 no-shows for alcohol breath testing, and the overall compliance rate was 99.9%. I think I left out that there were 15 positive alcohol tests. There were 52 individuals monitored for 1,136 days of SCRAM monitoring. There was one no-show, one tampering violation, and one alcohol violation. The overall SCRAM monitoring rate was 99.9%. There were 999 drug tests administered with 96 violations and 61 no-shows. There were 16 drug testing patches submitted for testing with seven violations. And Commissioners, within the next month or two, you'll see a change in the format of the report. The 24/7 program will start to become a tool of pretrial services instead of reporting out as its own program. Probably 98% of the people who are on that program have it as a condition of bond, and with our more robust pretrial program that's launching shortly, it will become one of the conditions that judges select among many for pretrial release. And so you'll start to see the report look a little bit different in the future. Work release admitted 15 individuals. House arrest admitted 69 individuals. The Reentry Assistance Program admitted 29, and two individuals achieved GED. Reentry Services and Therapeutic Communities in the jail admitted 179 individuals, which continues to be a significant increase each and every month as this program gets back to normal operations following the lifting of most of our COVID restrictions. And one individual achieved DED. Pretrial Services continued to provide regular information to the courts regarding candidates for bond reduction and early pleas in response to the pandemic. 26 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, saving 438 bed days. 297 individuals were placed on pretrial release. 1,135 individuals were managed on pretrial release with a 93% compliance rate. 113 individuals visited the law library. Training sessions were held with county and district court judges in preparation for the launch of the Public Safety Assessment and Enhanced Pretrial Release Program. Training sessions for law enforcement, prosecutors, and defense attorneys are scheduled ahead of the mid-June launch. Enclosure number 3, Compliance. Regular annual documentation is being completed for all compliance processes, and we are currently preparing for our upcoming PRIA, or Prison Rape Elimination Act, audit, which is scheduled for July 11th through the 15th. This audit will cover both the jail and community corrections. Enclosure number 4, Personnel. Five officers below the rank of sergeant and one sergeant left employment in April. One officer was promoted from CO1 to CO2, and congratulations to Jordan Graham as he was promoted to sergeant. 12 new officers began our training academy yesterday. Enclosure number 5, Population. There were 1,339 admissions, 1,312 releases. Our high count was 1,043, and our low count was 996. Our average daily population was 1,016, which is actually unchanged from the month of March. There were 109 custodial bed sanctioned days, excuse me, I said that, custodial sanctioned bed days, and that is a decrease. The U.S. Marshal population increased. The felony pretrial population decreased slightly. The misdemeanor population remained stable. Probation violations were stable, and the female population increased slightly, and we were able to continue to operate three housing units for females. Enclosure number 6, Medical. There were 1,174 intake screenings. There were 371 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 22 times for emergent medical care. 11 of those were by 911. There were also 11 hospital admissions, which resulted in 48 days of combined hospitalization. Enclosure number 7, Mental Health. There were 129 initial psychiatric appointments. There were four initial mental health assessments. There were 92 mental health infirmary placements. There were 171 individuals placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were four Board of Mental Health referrals and four referrals to long-term psychiatric care facilities. Other noteworthy items, we continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. During April, we had four known cases of COVID-19 among the incarcerated population, resulting in the quarantine of four housing units. No staff members were known to have tested positive during April. Our vaccination rate for our staff remains approximately 75%. During April, we administered 26 first doses of Moderna, 13 second doses of Moderna, and 19 booster doses of Moderna in the jail, and we administered 24 second doses of Moderna at community corrections. As of May 1st, we have fully vaccinated 1,637 incarcerated individuals and provided boosters to 157 individuals. We operated under the green COVID protocols throughout April. However, we have begun to inch closer to the yellow criteria, which would trigger additional precautions and restrictions. And I'll just note that we are right on the cusp of making that decision based on the criterion where we stand, both in the community and inside the jail as of right now. Our body-worn cameras went live on May 11th. The rollout will occur over the course of several weeks, resulting in, which will result in cameras becoming standard issue for all officers. We will be among the first correctional facilities in the United States to have outfitted our entire department with body-worn cameras. This will improve safety for our staff and provide greater transparency for the public. And finally, I'm going to start including a story about, in each report, about the good works that the men and women of the Department of Corrections that they do every day. And in April, Officer Dwayne Wilson, a newer officer who had just recently completed training, stood out. Officer Wilson noticed something seemed off with an inmate who was not previously known to be suicidal and had only minor charges when he returned to his housing unit after his initial court appearance. The inmate went into the shower after returning from court. And Officer Wilson, acting on his intuition and observations of the individual's behavior, went into the shower to check on the inmate. Officer Wilson discovered that the inmate was in the process of attempting to hang himself. Officer Wilson radioed for assistance and intervened to save this person's life. We are grateful for Officer Wilson's vigilance and his heroic life-saving actions. With that, I'm ready for any of your questions.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks a lot, Mike. I think more of, this is just from my education, when you talk about community corrections and in-house programs, I just kind of want a better understanding with the, we're decreasing bed days with that, so are all of these folks going out into the community one way or another, first of all, and then, second of all, do we have any information about the, like, recidivism rates and whether they're following through with their treatment? It drew my attention just because I noticed with the drug patches that there were 16 folks, and half of them were tested positive, so.
Sure. So, your first question about how community corrections saves bed days in the jail, we have unused capacity when it comes to beds in the Criminal Justice Center and the Community Corrections Building. These are, the strategies that I spoke of are ways for us to utilize more of that capacity, and we have some more coming down the pike pretty soon to increase the utilization of that building, which then takes pressure off the population in the jail. It is much cheaper for us to house individuals in the community, in a community correction setting, actually, you know, really at very little additional cost because the staff are already there. And so we're trying to make sure that we utilize that building to the fullest extent that we can. Regarding the, like, the drug testing patches, so those are individuals that are out on pretrial release. They have the 24/7 program as a condition of bond, and if they have a history of drug abuse, they will be assigned at first typically to come in and drug test regularly on random days of the week. And then, for some people, it can be either that they were, that they were drug tested, or, excuse me, that they've been successful with that protocol for a while, so we let them take a step downs because they only have to come in every couple of weeks to get a new drug patch on. Or if we have somebody who doesn't live in the area, we'll use a drug patch, so they don't have to come in so often. We don't see, I mean, we see very, very high success rates with the alcohol protocols. I never expected that the, you know, that the drug testing would be as successful because of the, they're more addictive substances, the addictions tend to be worse. But in general, you know, you're still seeing people over the course of time improve their compliance.
Okay, so do we see folks who are, again, recidivism, does that increase with those who are, for example, not complying to the drug surveillance?
So, we haven't run a recidivism study in particular on the 24/7 program for a while, and I'm not even positive that we've run it since we've added the drug testing protocols to it. But we can do that. We did see a significant reduction in DUI behavior for individuals who were charged with a DUI and on the alcohol protocols, that was sustained during the program and even after the program. But it's a good thing for us to check on from time to time.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you very much for your presentation. The numbers incarcerated seem to be down 10% to 20% from what they were four years ago or three years ago, and that's a positive.
Even a year ago, yeah.
The other thing I'd like to say, and maybe it's not appropriate, but it's my feeling, Officer Wilson and what he did in saving that life, to me, I'd like to see our board recognize that, having come here, because that was quite, some great instincts to do that, and maybe have a resolution for Officer Wilson, and I respect your judgment on that, but let us know if you think that's appropriate, our chairperson, Marianne Borgeson, and we do that.
I can certainly do that. Thank you, Commissioner.
That was really, you know, I appreciate all of your team and what they do, and extraordinary kinds of things, so I think that was extraordinary.
It absolutely was.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Friend? Oh, sorry, turn your light.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, yeah, thanks for the report. And to Commissioner Morgan's point, I don't, I don't think, what the officer did was truly, what Officer Wilson did was truly heroic. The funny thing is, it's not funny, the ironic thing is, I bet that happens twice a week. So I'm not downplaying it, I'm saying, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do a resolution, I'm saying we could have three resolutions a meeting about some of the things that happened. These are reactive, instinctive officers you have, so certainly not downplaying it, and I think when those things come to you and those ideas come to you and say, this is even more so, or whatever, we'd be happy to dialogue that with you. I did have a question. Mike, when you go to enclosure, enclosure 5, and you were talking about the U.S. Marshal population increases, you and I have talked about this, and I know we've, I know all the board members have probably visited with you about it. A couple of the key reasons why that type of population will actually increase, so in other words, are we, does the geographic region, according to the U.S. Marshals, expand, and suddenly we're saying, yeah, yeah, we've got some bandwidth? I mean, how does that work?
So, the marshals can place people basically anywhere they wish, to my knowledge, you know, they're obviously.
With your permit?
Well, so we have a contract with them. They can, you know, they may have people, if we're the closest bed for somebody that has a federal case, you know, 500 miles away, we're the closest bed. That typically isn't the case, most of them are, you know, in the area. And we are, we actually have given the marshals some communications recently to start, you know, sending a few more folks our way because our population has been lower. It is a revenue source for Douglas County that outweighs the costs. This is something we've, throughout the course of the pandemic, we've kind of walked a tight rope of, you know, you've got to look at your staffing numbers, you have to look at the conditions of COVID in the facility, and you have to look at and balance that with the opportunities for additional revenue. Right now, we're in a position where I think that we could pursue adding, allowing them to place additional individuals in our custody to increase the revenue to Douglas County.
Okay. And Mike, do we know what the average length of stay is? Have we factored some of that in yet? I mean, month to month, when the marshals do that and we make those decisions, their longer stays, right?
Correct, they are, they are. And if we had a significant change in circumstance where we needed them to reduce their numbers, we give them a reasonable amount of time to do that, and they, you know, they've been up to this point, they've been very cooperative with us.
Right, that was my point. I want to make sure we have some flexibility, and you and I have talked about that before, but not for a while, and I forget stuff, so, thanks, Mike.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thanks for this. And as I understand, you have zero COVID cases among the staff and four among the population?
So those were the, that was the data for April. We currently have, I believe, one staff member out.
I'm sorry, say again.
I think, we currently do have one staff member out, but during the month of April, which covers this report, we did not have any known staff cases.
Okay. And in the population, is there any change in that, four?
It's still been holding at that number.
The average daily population, if I read this correctly, is 1,016. And last month, you reported it was down, the average daily population was down. Is this down again?
No, it's exactly the same, actually, as it was in March.
Exactly the same.
Exactly the same.
And I was just doing math here, whoever does your charts, they could save me this every month by just giving me a majority-minority percentage. Otherwise, I sit here doing my own arithmetic. It appears that we are, again, in a majority-minority population situation, and the leading component of our population are African-Americans at 43.27%. But it looks like this has gone up a little bit.
I think it did trend up a little bit from the previous month.
You don't happen to have the?
I don't have. I, I don't have last month's, I'm gonna have her add a graph that gives us a trend.
That'd be great, just what is it, you know?
Right.
And, uh, it's way over sixty percent, uh, which, you know, is trending in the wrong direction and has been. I, I suppose, you know, when we talk these programs and everything, going forward, maybe not at a board meeting, but maybe at a committee meeting, it might be good to see what, if any, impact any of these programs could have on moving that number. Because the only movement we ever see in the majority-minority population in corrections seems to be to increase the number of incarcerated minorities in our community, uh, which is wrong. And so, if any of these programs, which I, I think are, are good, and, uh, you know, we're, we're moving in the right directions programmatically, have any effect on that, it's problematic to me, and that's why I keep asking every single month about this majority-minority population, that we seem to incarcerate our minority population at a way, way, way higher percentage than we do, uh, the majority population.
I, I think a good study for me to do, or have my staff do, is to try to run, um, an analysis of what people are charged with by racial demographics. Because you, you brought up the point about where, who are our programs helping, you know, and, um, and we have criteria, you know, for community corrections in terms of, you know, risks that we're willing to take based upon people's charges and their histories. And it's probably a good check-in for us to make sure that we're doing that fairly and objectively, and look at the, uh, look at the charges. And that may be telling to us if, on a variety of ways, in terms of, um, whether individuals who, of different racial backgrounds are facing differences in the severity of their charges.
One minute.
One of the, you know, recurrent problems that we've had in, in critical positions throughout the county, nursing, corrections, uh, public safety, is staffing. And, um, again, it might be helpful going forward if the staffing numbers, you know, were, uh, on the, on the dashboard here, under personnel. Staffing is a personnel issue primarily. And, so, just to recap, where are we staffing-wise, good, bad, or indifferent over last month?
For our, for our corrections officers, we are at eighty-five point seven percent, which is probably very close to where we were, um, the previous month. Maybe a slight gain. I would say, as we sort of had a slow.
Time.
But there's no one else in the queue, so go ahead and continue.
We had a, kind of a slow decline in our staffing levels over the course of 2021, and I would say that's sort of stabilized. We haven't, but we haven't made significant gains to recoup those losses yet, um, in, in 2022.
So, just for purposes of putting a fine point on that, where is that staffing number?
Uh, page seven of 51.
I'm sorry, say again?
Page seven, page seven of 51.
Page seven, okay. And that would put it under what enclosure?
Administrative Services, and, and you're correct, Commissioner, I need to merge those two sections into one.
So, this shows authorized personnel of 492, on hand of 428. Overall, all categories, eighty-seven percent staffing. And you say that's about consistent with where we were a month ago?
Correct.
And I think you have classes now and coming on as well in the near future.
We, we just started a class of 12 officers yesterday.
So, this, and I, I appreciate this, corrections officer staffing graph just below the, the one that we just referenced, shows kind of a, a stable on-hand, the little green bar,
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to change much, and there's a consistent falloff between the authorized level and the green level. As a matter of fact, going back as far as this goes, which is May 21, we've never been at authorized levels.
We very, very briefly made our authorized strength in January of 2021, very briefly.
Well, I, you know, the perfect is the enemy of the good, it would be better to have higher than eighty-seven percent, but, I mean, eighty-seven percent is reasonably high. It's, the corrections officers category, which seems to be most problematic, where we're authorized for 349, and we have 299, so we're basically 50 under on the frontline corrections officers.
Correct.
The result of that is overtime for those officers who are on staff?
Correct, throughout the ranks. That, that creates kind of a cascading effect of overtime for sergeants and lieutenants and so forth.
So, are we in a mandatory overtime situation now?
That hasn't been as bad recently. It still is present, and it will, until we get really up into the mid-nineties for staffing, it'll, it'll likely continue to be an occasional presence, um, but it has not been significant, fortunately.
Thank you.
No other, um, folks in the queue. Mike, I appreciate, I know we've talked about the, having a good story, um, for the board, um, and this certainly, um, is that. When we talk about our programming, can we also look at the success stories that we've had? I know you didn't have a lot of time after our conversation about it, so, but the programming piece, so we can, again, have good information as to whether or not we're, again, those programs are doing what they're supposed to do. And, you know, again, if we can help one individual not return, um, and get on their feet, that's, um, again, in my opinion, worth telling the board what is going on, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate this.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, no other questions or comments? Thanks, Mike. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Madam Chair?
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, May 3, 2022. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is the consent agenda, items A through H. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
On item F, which is a approval of a fourth supplemental lease, Field Club of Omaha, I know from my conversations, uh, with Commissioner Garcia, who's chairman of the Administrative Services Committee overseeing this, that he held hearings, and Mr. Laye, who's here today, presented, as did folks from the Field Club relative to this and the, uh, proposed leases attached. I, uh, and, and in conversations with Commissioner Garcia, he indicated to me that he was in support of this. I am as well. I just wanted to indicate that, uh, for the record, I am a social member of Field Club, and so, I reached out to the Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure Commission relative to the question of, is it a conflict for me to vote on this? And they informed me that it is not, and so, I intend to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
No other questions or comments? Commissioner, Larry?
Larry, Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I'm gonna comment about this first phase of consent agenda. Because the rules between different bodies are not consistent, it gets pretty confusing. The afternoon has two different kinds of consent agendas, but I remember reading, I think it is your rules, which I consider probably better than most political bodies that hold open meetings. And I said so at the OPUS meeting last night. But I believe you are supposed to ask the audience, uh, as you've read, uh, what you just did, if there's anybody in the audience that wants to comment on the consent agenda. And sometimes you don't do that. So, we sit there, and all of a sudden, things fly by us. But I do commend you for your rules being somewhat more reasonable than most of the other political entities, okay? Thank you.
With that, we do have a motion and a second for the consent agenda, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is a recognition and proclamation, a recognition of the following county employee who is retiring, Samuel DeGeorge II. Worked for the Douglas County Environmental Services Department for thirty years. Samuel is not with us today, but we do wish him the best on his retirement and thank him for his work and dedication to the citizens of Douglas County. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Excuse me, Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm gonna hope to get through two, two main topics, and hopefully you'll ask me some questions, 'cause I know you can if you want to. But I want to continue on, uh, the theme of, uh, the, I consider the big picture, what is going on in our country, but what is going on here also. Now, last night at the school board meeting, there was some discussion by teachers who are part of the 500 teachers or whatever, that are deciding to leave the profession. Absolutely no discussion whatsoever with those teachers or with the public that were there. Once again, your rules are fairly good, because sometimes you do have a public carion, and citizens are allowed. When they have a consent agenda, uh-uh, there is no citizen input on those. They have only citizen comments for five minutes, for a total of an hour. If there's only one person, he still only gets five minutes, if they do not shut the microphone off, which that does happen. But the overall big picture here is, under the umbrella of this argument about, are there facts about CRT or not? I want to talk to you about three things. Number one, I am somewhat informed, I, I do have a college degree, I do read, and this is a collector's item, History Magazine, that talks about how Hitler rose to power. Now, currently, we're hearing this thing about the big lie, the big lie, the big lie. People like me that think there was some shenanigans with the election is the big lie. We're the liars. This is the kind of tactic that Adolf Hitler used, and I'll read the words out of here on that. Because he said, if you tell a big lie often enough, people are so susceptible that they will believe it. The big picture here is that, with the various resolutions that we have seen passed here and read here, that some people think have words similar to critical race theory, the critics of it, uh, it does sound that way to a person that has read history and the person that is, uh, reading alternative news sources. So, I'll quit on that subject. Alternative news sources. I don't see any cameras today. They don't need them, because there's awful lot of people probably watching and writing up their own news story. The community colonists, they call them, volunteer, uh, news reporters. It's true, The Reader Magazine talks about that. It talks about the alternative news sources. It only names two, but it also talks about them being nonprofits. They're collecting information maybe from here, but also in your private offices from you, and then they're reporting it. But we don't hear that from you people. We have to read it in The Reader, or hear it on the KFAB, or, uh, Nebraska Examiner, and there's another one, I don't know, there's eight or 10 different news sources around Omaha. There's some of them was in here last week. They're sitting in the audience and gathering some information, and then they go down to places like the Collet's Your House and talk about it. There's one of them that comes up here and doesn't identify himself. He used to write stories about you and city council, under the moniker of noise. That's another one. So, you know, you need to have more two-way conversations with the citizens, so we don't have to read about it in The Reader, et cetera, because maybe those facts aren't true either. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to a presentation. We have a presentation and discussion on an adopt-a-county road program, and with me today is our chief deputy from our county attorney's office, or county engineer's office. And the, um, citizen who brought this, uh, to me, um, again, I think we've all been across the country and seen adopt a, a road program, um, whether it be the state, um, or county. But we didn't have one, and, um, so we had a little conversation, and I said, well, let's work with our county engineer and see if we can, um, produce one. And so, um, what you have is, um, we looked at the state's, um, program in Lancaster counties, although there's gazillion of these around, um, spreadsheet-full, actually, of these programs. But the county engineer looked at, um, those models and felt that it was a doable project if we started slow, um, and had good, uh, application process, and, um, obviously, the safeguards in place. And so, um, the information that we provided to you is basically that of the Nebraska's, um, program that we would model, um, and, um, it, and they would fill out an application. And Dan, I'm gonna have you, um, kind of talk to us about, if a citizen were to call and say, um, I would like, and I think we decided on a two-mile stretch of road, um, that we would like to adopt, um, tell us how that, that process would actually occur.
Let's see if this shows up there. Thank you, Commissioner. First of all, I want to thank, uh, the chairperson for bringing this to our attention. You know, we're busy with our daily duties out at the county engineer's office, and, uh, really hadn't put this as a priority, uh, to be honest with you. It's something that is very common throughout our country, certainly through Nebraska. And so, the commissioner called, and we discussed it a little bit on the phone, and she was just asking if we would be of any interest in doing this, and I told her, sure we would, we can do this, we're Douglas County. So, uh, we looked around, and Mary Ann, uh, Commissioner Borgeson, excuse me, uh, sent us a lot of information, uh, that she researched on the internet, and it is amazing how many jurisdictions actually do this. Some of them do it quite extensively. So, we're gonna take one small step before we jump into what some of these other communities have evolved to over time, I suspect. We are willing and ready to do this, we have the manpower to assist the public, we will work with the county. We will work with the county attorney in regards to the language. We'll put in our application process, kind of explaining their responsibility as the sponsor, uh, the liability, uh, of the sponsor and the group that they put together to collect the debris that's along some of our county roads, uh, is, is really, uh, leveraged towards the sponsor. Uh, we do not want young little children running around our county roads. No one under fifteen, I think, is what most communities use. Uh, they need to have adult sponsorship, of course. The jurisdictions, uh, from what we have researched, furnish the signing, the warning signs, that type of thing you put up to warn the driving public that there's something going on ahead, like a road work ahead type sign. It'd be collecting litter type sign, I guess, is what we're shooting for. Uh, we would, uh, suggest they do this for a minimum of two years, period. Adopt two, minimum of two miles of, uh, road, both sides of the road, but for, uh, for matter of fact, and no more than six miles is what, uh, most jurisdictions have evolved to. You start walking down a mile of road, you're going to find out that's a long way. There can be, in some occasions, a lot of debris to pick up. Uh, we will hold, uh, I guess, an instructional period prior to authorizing these permits or applications with the sponsor, pointing out to them the do's and don'ts, the safety cautions, where you should park your vehicle, where you can put the, uh, debris once you're done. And by the way, the county would furnish the bags if need be. Some people might bring their own, but we would certainly furnish the trash bags. Uh, we would furnish vests, uh, and the signage, and we would pick up the debris. Okay, we just collect it and place it somewhere where our maintenance can just go out there and pick it up fairly simply. We don't expect, uh, an interruption. Our traffic department personnel will be handling this. They're the ones that make our signs and put out our signs and, uh, warning signs, et cetera, for Douglas County. We have enough employees, we feel, and we can always add what we call laborers to assist if need be. Uh, so they're excited about it, our, our personnel are excited about it. Uh, they actually made up this sign that you're looking at. Uh, some people said white, blue. Uh, the answer to that is a manual of uniform traffic control devices requires certain colors for certain signs. You know, stop signs are red, construction signs are orange, and this type of sign is blue. So I, I'm going with that. But anyway, uh, we, we, we'll start this in the fall. We feel the spring and the fall of the year is the best time. That's when the weeds are not growing and, uh, that type of thing is less to, to deal with. There may be some roads we just won't allow anyone to go out there and pick up trash because of the traffic and the, uh, ditches. Some of these ditches are pretty deep, actually, along county roads. If you start looking for them, there's water in them, you're around usually, that type of thing. But, uh, uh, we can certainly use the help. We have some, some areas, usually around new construction out in the suburbs of Omaha is where a lot of debris collects because of the winds we've been having, close trash all over the place. Uh, we can use the help and, uh, we'll, uh, I'm sure, uh, find it of interest to a lot of groups, and, uh, we're willing to support them. So with that, I'll close my presentation.
I'm glad you brought up the sign because, um, the staff was very, um, proud, actually, of that sign, and I am of them as well. And then on the, uh, post, there would be an, another little sign that would say who is adopting that, that road. Julie Dunbar, I wish she could have made it to our meeting because she's the one who brought this to me, but she's been basically, um, kind of cleaning up, uh, a road around her home, um, on her own, and that's kind of where she got the thought of, you know, well, why don't we make this a Douglas County program? So I definitely want to give a shout out to her and, again, working with the county engineers, they were, they were great to work with on this. So, um, anyway, um, we'll take questions or comments from commissioners. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Dan, thanks for this. It's a great program. I noticed on the application to adopt a highway, it begins with a sponsoring organization and, um, like probably several folks here, I'm a Rotarian, and I was wondering, um, would this be an appropriate, you know, sponsoring organization, somebody like the Rotary, what, a service organization here in the community?
I would say that would be ideal, yes.
Okay. And if you're a sponsoring organization, help me out here, is it a one-time thing? Like you would pick June 10th and everybody get together and come out to 108th Street or wherever? Or is it an ongoing thing, or how does that work?
It would be ongoing, two years. Twice a year is what we're recommending. Uh, it can be renewed. Uh, we're, we're looking at, uh, probably six years possibly total. You know, if you renew it every two years for three times, that type of thing is kind of common, apparently. Yes, and, and, uh, we feel the six miles is probably the max we'd want anyone to take on. It's a big undertaking. And by the way, there's certain things we'll put in the application we do not want them to pick up. You know, it could be
I saw.
Other things out there you just don't want to mess with, and they would just notify it of us, of it, of that type of thing, and we'll take care of that. But, uh, you know, it can be all kinds of different things you'll find out in the county. So, anyway.
I know that we have a, a section of the old Lincoln Highway, uh, in the, in the county. Would that be an appropriate, um, street?
Yes, it would. It would, however, the city has annexed about all of that away from Douglas County. So that's, that's another discussion we'll have. But yes, that would be ideal. I know the neighbors that had joined the old Lincoln Highway are very protective of the old Lincoln Highway, and they love when we close the road for the winter, uh, season, and wish we'd just leave it closed. But it is a public road, but yes, that would be ideal.
On that point, uh, the other cities and towns in Douglas County, are they collaborating with us on this? Or would they?
No, no. I don't foresee that, uh, no.
This is, this is primarily for ex-urban roads, uh, outside of the city?
Yeah, county road, highway, uh, type roads. There's about seven hundred lane miles total, so there's a lot of roads to pick from. Some are, most of them are paved, but a lot of them are gravel. Uh, it's probably in the more urban suburban area where the trash is blown around more than other places, but you can find things in most, all county ditches if you're looking for it.
And we could get a copy of that roadmap from your office?
Yes, it's a, uh, you know, a county roadmap. It's official document, actually. It's important in the law to have a map because it shows what roads are responsible for. So yes, it's on our website.
Great. Thanks, and thanks again for doing this. Uh, as a Creighton Prep, Creighton University alum, I have no problem with the white and blue, uh, sign color.
Okay.
It's excellent.
Me too.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess, Commissioner, just for my clarification, I guess at some point we'll get a resolution on this?
Yes, I'll, uh, bring it back, um, probably in a couple of weeks, once we have all of the i's dotted and t's crossed for our application process.
Very good.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, and again, thank the staff, um, again, for me, for all of the work they did on this. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else wishing to comment on this? Thank you. Uh, next, we have some public hearings. The first is a Class C license for beer, wine, distilled spirits on and off sale, um, at twenty-six eleven North, two hundred and fourth, the Launch Brewery. Manager application is, uh, Melanie Phalen of nineteen zero seven South Seventh Street. Um, this is the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair Ferguson, members of the Douglas County Board. My name is Sean Kelly, two eight zero four, South Eighty-seventh Avenue. Appearing on behalf of the applicant this morning, this is their third location, uh, for this ownership group. This is on, as the commissioner noted, on, uh, North Two Hundred and Fourth Street, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions on this? Again, anyone wishing to speak for or against? This is the public hearing. No comments. Uh, the public hearing is closed. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is a, uh, Class Number One license for beer and wine distilled spirits on and off sale for T N L Nails Inc., um, at thirty-eight zero eight South Two Hundred and Third Plaza, Suite Three Hundred in Elkhorn. Um, this, again, is the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Duke Tran. I am a legal counsel for the applicant and the manager application of the corporate application for Class I legal license. I'll be happy to answer any question you may have. If not, I ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the application. Thank you.
Okay, are there any, um, one wishing, is there anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing?
Duke Tran, first name D U C, last name Tran, T R A N.
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you for being here. Next, we'll move to committee. Um, the first is our finance committee, the budget report as presented. Um, we do have item two, a monthly fee report, um, as we get from the Douglas County Clerk's Office. And then we have a few presentations. The first presentation on budget is by Douglas County Attorney's Office on the department's fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three budget request, which exceeds the target amount by two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Their amount requested is twelve million, three hundred and forty-three dollars, three hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. And with us today, the county attorney is here to talk to us about, um, the budget. Good morning.
Good morning, Don Klein, Douglas County Attorney, here before the board. Thank you for hearing me this morning. I'm here to humbly ask you for some additional money for our budget. Uh, I know Tom Riley's going to appear before you next week. We were hoping to do it together. He was unavailable to do it this week. I'm unavailable to do it next week. So I know he's going to also approach you about additional funding for, for the budget, for the Public Defender's Office. The cases that the county attorney's office and the Public Defender's Office handle are, are the most important cases, I believe, uh, for the constituents of Douglas County, citizens of Douglas County, whether it's the civil cases, uh, the juvenile cases, or the criminal cases that are handled. For instance, if you just talk about the Civil Division of the County Attorney's Office, our ten lawyers in there, uh, if you had to farm out those services, those legal services to private, uh, law firms at this point in time, the, the cost to the county would be tremendously greater, uh, than it is from our budgetary standpoint. With the cases that we have now that, that we handle, we're still running about four thousand, in the criminal division, about four thousand, five hundred felonies a year, uh, which is a lot of, uh, quite a few cases. Uh, and the Public Defender's Office, I'm sure, has, has about the same, uh, at least from the standpoint of what they have as far as a percentage of those cases. The complexity of those cases has grown over the years, uh, with regard to forensic evidence, DNA, uh, all the different types of forensics, expert testimony, and particularly with regard to child cases. Uh, we've seen a growth with regard to those child, uh, uh, sexual assault cases, child abuse cases, uh, and the expertise needed and necessary in those kinds of cases. Uh, the stress level is very high in our office, and that's because people care about the cases that we handle. They realize the importance of those cases to the victims and to the county generally in making sure that justice is done. Uh, one of the things that's, that's also, uh, something different that we have now that we've never had before is the amount of video on cases and the time it takes for us to view the, if you have, all the officers have body cameras, okay? And there's cruiser cameras, and every business has security cameras. All right? And everybody, a lot of neighborhoods, everybody has a Ring, uh, camera on their video. Well, all that video is obtained by the law enforcement agency that's involved there. I think the police department's hired, they have a whole unit devoted to just the video, the compilation of that video. We have to get it, we have to give it in discovery. Both sides have to look at all the video. If you have, say, twelve officers that go to a reported crime, they're all going to have body camera video, they're going to have cruiser video, there's going to be video from security, uh, cameras around the area, and there's, there's also Ring video, and we're going to have to observe that or watch that. We can't just, you know, not look at it. So that's a lot of, of time-consuming work on the part of the attorneys for both our office and the Public Defender's Office. And as I said, in some counties, I know in Lancaster County, they asked for two more lawyers just because of, uh, the video, uh, part of the, of the job anymore that they have to look at. So that's, that's something that you need to realize. Uh, we, in Douglas County, have more problem-solving courts than anywhere in the state of Nebraska and pretty much in the Midwest. We have a drug court with some, with over a hundred and fifty people in it. We have a young adult court, which we've just expanded from thirty to sixty people with the permission of the Supreme Court. We have a veterans' treatment court that we started in the last year. We have a diversion program. We have mental health diversion. We use all those problem-solving courts to divert people out of the system. And it's a very effective, uh, way to handle things, but it takes a lot of resources. Uh, the, the legislature just approved another district court judge for Douglas County. It's another court and we have to go to, and they needed it also because they need a judge for some of these problem-solving courts. Well, obviously, we have to be there for these problem-solving courts. There are courts. And we keep probably about five hundred people a year out of the prison system, uh, to help them with their, either their addiction problems, uh, their, whether their PTSD issues with a veteran, whether it's a young adult that doesn't qualify for juvenile court that we want to keep from getting a felony. Uh, we need to have these programs to work, and they're not, they're not easy programs. So we have to, it's not just putting somebody in and showing up one time. Our, our lawyers are involved in a weekly basis to keep track of these folks, to make sure they're doing what they're doing, uh, so that we can get to the point where we're not going to put them in the penitentiary. So, and those are very effective systems. Karen, Karen Butch is from Human Resources, is working with us right now, uh, to put together a step program for our lawyers and a classification system, uh, for our lawyers, so they know where they stand on a compensation perspective. Because honestly, uh, one of the most important things that Mr. Riley and I see is, is our ability to retain people right now. I'll just, I'll give you examples. I lost three lawyers to Sarpy County, uh, Sarah Moore, Madison McNairy, and Nissa Jones, uh, to have less stress for them, and they're going to make more money. And they all told me, I don't want to leave here. I love working in your office, but if I can go there and not have the caseload that I have here and make more money, I'm going to do it. I lost three lawyers to, uh, from the criminal division to, uh, to go work for a workman's compensation firm. Again, much less stress, lot lower caseload, and more compensation. Okay? We lost two lawyers from the Civil Division, uh, same, same capacity. Uh, all of them have said, hey, I, I love this job. You've, you've given me a great opportunity. I've, I've got great training, I've got great experience here, but, you know, I've got a family, uh, I need to make more money, and I'd, I'd like to have the stress level lowered than what it is. So what we're, what I'm asking for is, is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Part of that is for autopsy costs, which I don't have any control over, the number of forensic autopsies we do a year. That, that amount's a little bit higher, so we want a budget for that. want to budget for that to increase our compensation for law clerks. But mostly, this is for personnel issues and salary increases to fit with a step program that we want to install on the first of the year. And it's about retention. I need to make sure that my folks know how much I appreciate the hard work that they do, and I think they need to know from you also that that's the case, and I know you do. You haven't seen any issues, scandals from either my office or the Public Defender's Office. Those folks do a great job, and they really care. And our mantra in the county attorney's office is, and I tell our lawyers, this one, we hire them, they have an opportunity every day to do something to make Douglas County a better place to live for all the people that live here, from all perspectives, whether it's dealing with people with addiction problems, people that need mental health services, or people that need to be held responsible for crimes they commit and the victims. So people that work in my office really believe in public service, and that's the other thing that we all agree to when we come into someplace like the county attorney's office or the Public Defender's Office. And so I'm asking you respectfully for this, it's about, it's about a little less than two percent added on, that two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars. And it's necessary, if you want the quality of work that we've always provided to Douglas County, we need to retain the employees that we have. And I know sometimes if people are just going to mature and grow on and go into the private sector and those kinds of things, and we can't really compete with that, but we need to at least make it so that people can have a decent standard of living with the salaries they get and the workload that they have in trying murder cases, child abuse cases, child sexual assault cases, the heavy-duty stuff that's required in our office. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Don. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah. Thanks for the information, Don. Can you, can you put some context around the whole idea of trying to stay competitive with commensurate, commensurate counties and within a region, or when you reach out as far, as far as you can actually practically do it? When you, if you don't get these type of things that happen, if you can't stay competitive, can you put some context around what that does when you bring attorneys in and they require on-the-job training? I mean, you're essentially going to a law school to a person that's a year out, and you're pulling them in at that point, because you're forced into that situation. Am I right?
Well, we recruit. We go to Creighton, we go to Nebraska, we go to a lot of the law schools around the area. We recruit people to come and work in our office. We want people that are dedicated, who want to do this kind of work. And of course, if they're newbies, then we have to train them. So we have to send them to seminars, they have to track, follow somebody, those kinds of things. So especially, the other thing I didn't mention is that we lost, I think, four people in the last eight months to be district court judges, which is a great thing. I'm very proud of them. They're great folks. They did a great job, but they're some of the backbone of our staff. And so it tells you what kind of people that we have in my office, that they've been appointed to judgeships. But when you lose that quality of people, you need to retain them or need to replace them with people of a like value, I guess, experience. And it's difficult to do that if we can't have, if we don't have competitive salaries. And Karen has actually done some work, and she's not quite done yet, but she's looked at, you know, Lincoln, Sarpy, I think Jackson County in Kansas, the Kansas City area, other places, Des Moines, and has done a comparison and says, you know, we need to do this to keep you competitive.
Okay, and I guess that, I guess I would piggyback on that. What I'm getting at is sometimes, and Don, tell me if this makes some sense, anybody here, tell me if it does. If we look at a correction situation, or we look at a law enforcement situation, we know when they lose X amount of people, how long it's going to take to train those people and get them up to speed, and then you could put them out in the field, or you can put them. With you, it's more nebulous. So you bring, you bring four new attorneys in, two of them are from Creighton, one of them is from Notre Dame. I don't, Notre Dame's overrated, but continue down that road, you've got OJT. You just don't know how long it's going to take. An attorney could take, this person's going to hit the ground running, three weeks, you're going, wow, that person's taken off. You can get them in there. I guess what I'm getting at is, what do you not know? The money's going to help, sure, but is it, is it going to, you get more money, how long is it going to take to get back up to speed? I mean, because you're behind the eight ball right now.
Well, it takes time. You know, we've had some lateral people that we've hired. We hired an attorney from, a deputy from Saunders County. We've hired a deputy from Lancaster County. So we end up trading people off here, but some of them actually lived in Omaha, so that worked out well for them. But when you have a lateral transfer, they're still going to have to get used to our system. And when you have a new person, we kind of have a progression of the way we handle it with people, but it does take some time. They're going to start off with some lower-grade work. I mean, and that's not lower grade from the standpoint, but it's just not as complex. Maybe they're going to start off in county court doing misdemeanors or preliminary hearings or arraignments, and then they'll progress maybe to the juvenile court system, and then maybe to felonies. So we have a progression, and we'll do training with regard to those people. But it takes some time, yes. Sometimes with lateral transfers, it doesn't take as long.
From a criminal standpoint, I guess the final thing that I would say, are we, can you put yourself in a position where you can identify where public safety is at risk? I mean, you have to analyze that every day. I mean, if this doesn't happen, not trying to be canned about it, I mean, that's the last thing we want to do.
It's the last thing we want.
So you're asking this for a specific?
Well, I keep asking people to do more work and more complex work without giving them any more money to keep them up to snuff. And so that's difficult to do. At some point, people say, okay, wait a minute, you know, I'm going to go do something else. And it gets to be a morale issue. It gets to be an issue, because people love the work that they do. They want to be here. It's just, they've got to pay their bills, and they got to have, they have kids, they're going to have whatever it might be that you
Time.
Cost of raising a family.
Thank you. Pete, Commissioner Morgan?
Don, thank you for coming here. Will you submit, will you be submitting something in writing to all of us that might show if that two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand is being used, you know, for pay increases or something like that? We don't need names, but some of the way
Sure. I could do that. I thought I already had given something. I think we had given something. So, yeah, and I can submit more if there's any questions that anybody has about anything in that regard.
Yeah, I've seen some of it, and we've had some people request information about that. And I did talk to the Public Defender, Tom Riley, about this a week or so ago, and his budget and so on, and yours is two percent, as you stated, the two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. I want the commissioners to know, and I stand to be corrected certainly by Joe Lorenz or Commissioner Friend that works with me on the budget. I do want to correct him on one thing, Notre Dame's not overrated, but I'll let that go for now. But where we are, and this is a part I want especially Joe Lorenz to correct me on, I think what we face this year, and you're absolutely correct on what we're seeing in wages and so on, and then we heard the OPS thing, they got, I can't even believe it, seven hundred teachers, I think, leaving.
Right.
And I know people are leaving other vocations, the salaries and so on. But it looks like what we're faced with, commissioners, is with the increases, we're probably going to be short in our budget, four to five million dollars from what we're receiving in revenues this year, which we haven't ever faced in my ten-plus years here on the county board. So we've got some real challenges ahead of us on that, and I for one don't want to see us absolutely increase the mill levy. So we've got some hard decisions to make, in my opinion. And Joe, if I stated that incorrectly, if the target number plus what some of them have requested, I believe that leaves us four to five million dollars short.
Can I interrupt for just a second? And can we, we'll talk about the budget as a whole, but do you have any specific questions on county attorney budget?
No, I'm just saying, you want to be supportive. Your people like Teresa Yurk and all of them do a great job. But that's what we're faced with as we're going through this process of making these adjustments to your budget, which I think is necessary. But at the same time, I want the commissioners to know what we are looking at this year.
And, you know, I've always tried to be as fiscally conservative as I can. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't a situation where I thought, I've got to do something here. Or, as you said, we're going to lose people like Teresa Yurk or Brenda Beadle or all the attorneys that we have, because, you know, I know how hard they work and what they do. You see that. Everything we do is transparent. It's all public. You see the kind of cases that we handle, and I think we do a very good job of that. And I'm just asking for this amount of money, because I think we desperately need it to make sure that we keep people and retain them in our office.
And Commissioner Boigerson, I'd lastly say, I'm supportive of this two percent, but at the same time, we're probably going to be faced with some really hard decisions in the near future.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah, I basically want to echo what Commissioner Morgan was saying. I was going to bring up similar points. I do want to state that I'm a hundred percent supportive of this. I find that with, when you mention things like the diversion programs might work for, you know, five hundred, five hundred potential folks throughout the year, if we, for example, put them all in corrections, that's, you know, two hundred dollars a day at least. So that would be, you know, a hundred thousand dollars saved right there. But we don't turn it around and say it's a hundred thousand dollars saved. So I think it's, we have to keep that in perspective. At the same time, again, to comment on what Commissioner Morgan said, is that's my big concern, too. It's not an individual department issue where we am worried about the services that are provided or the need for even the budget increase. I just don't know how we, as a board, are going to be able to continue to do this without some type of, some type of change. And I think all of us are worried about that. We all understand the importance of paying our people, especially our good people and the people we don't have to, like the experienced folks, that we don't want them to leave. You know, once you get them trained, it's nice if they stay.
Right.
Because if the startup costs go down. And we see the same issue in corrections, the Sheriff's Department, the Health Center, where we're really having to pay a lot for personnel at this point. And that's the stuff that's going to break our budget. So I feel like when, you know, when it comes down the road and we're talking about property tax increases, none of us want to increase property taxes, but we're doing it to pay employees that can do these jobs in a very competent and safe way. So I, and I'm a fiscal conservative despite being, you know, socially as liberal as they get. But at the same time, this budget item, or these types of budget items really are starting to concern me in a huge way. So like Commissioner Morgan, I completely agree with the mission. I agree with the need. I see the competitive data out there. And it'd be nice if we could just, you know, have, you know, ARP of money in a different type of way to do this. So more than anything, it's a comment than a question, I would say.
And I seek grant money any place that I possibly can. We have a grant through the motor vehicle unit of the state who provides our salaries for, I think, two and a half, three lawyers, because they love the job that we do with all of our motor vehicle homicides and drunk driving. So in any other area I can, I look for the possibility, but there's always the concern when you're talking about grant money, that someday the rug's going to be pulled out from under you, and that money's not going to be there, then I'm going to come to you and say, okay, I need this money. You're going to like, where did this come from? And it's because the grants are gone. So it's always a two-edged sword there.
Thanks.
Sure.
And I just might ask the chairs of the Finance Committee, the next board meeting that we, if we could have our finance director give us an overview of the budget and where we're are, because I don't want to get off on that conversation and take away from the folks who are here presenting their budget. So with that, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this, Don. I appreciate what you and your office do along with the Public Defenders. It's essential, providing legal services to the people of Douglas County. And I appreciate that your folks, the public servant lawyers that work at the county attorneys and the public defenders, struggle with the pressure of the job and the fact that they could probably make a lot more in the private sector than they're making in government service.
Right.
So they should be recognized for that. I, you know, have, over the course of the pandemic, supported incentive pay for the public attorneys because they've been in the front line. I know that your office and the Public Defenders have suffered multiple COVID-positive results, because your lawyers are in court all the time with people who have COVID. And so, I mean, that's all factored into my support for your request here, which I think is valid and recognized. You know, we have received massive COVID relief from the Biden administration, most recently in the Affordable Care Act, you know, tens of millions of dollars that offset the, specifically intended to offset the revenue shortfalls that my colleague, Commissioner Morgan, has proposed as a problem. And I, you know, support using those monies, and we put some in a general fund of Douglas County, and we've put some in your office and other offices throughout the administration to see us through this COVID shortfall. But I just want you to know that your people have done a great job during really extraordinarily difficult times, and they're really kind of heroes for going to the front lines day after day after day, knowing that they run the risk of being exposed and have been exposed. And I know that you've had multiple people that have had to go out sick as a result of COVID. So they should be recognized. This is a legitimate request, and if there's anything else that we can do to help, hopefully, we're coming to the end of COVID, but it looks like it's coming back a little bit.
Yeah.
Let us know, because
Well, thank you.
I see your people all the time in the courthouse, interchanging with the population that comes into the courthouse. And there's really, you know, not much that we can do beyond what we've done, I don't know, to make that a safer place, if there is. Let us know that, too, because we want to make it as safe as possible.
I will. And we were here, just like the PDs were, and we battled through it. And I didn't bring it up, but my folks and the PDs, you know, we worked. We kept going. And I really think that the people in our offices really deserve those kind of accolades, because they did do a great job. And, you know, we're paying a price for that, too, and I didn't mention that, but, you know, because of all the cases, we couldn't try during the COVID problems with the jurors not being able to come in, you know, it's playing catch-up with all that stuff, too, so.
Yeah, I know, and you know, in the legal community, a lot of the big firms, people have been working at home for the last couple of years, and that's just not been possible for county attorneys and public defenders who have to go into court to make sure that, you know, we provide for justice.
Right.
So, you know, that should be recognized, that your public service lawyers are doing this in public, in person, during this pandemic, and they should be recognized for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments for the county attorney? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
Have a good day.
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I want to continue on this topic of confusion. On the front page of your agenda, it talks about rules of debate. It doesn't say for presentations, and it doesn't say for citizen comments. So I'm wondering, well, who do those rules apply to? Now, you didn't, right now, you did not ask for proponents. I understand that he's maybe a presenter. You called for a presentation. But you didn't call for proponents, and you haven't called for opponents. It sounds like you're moving on past that. So you need to explain the rules a little more clearly. But I'm a proponent, and I'll tell you why. We're running for the money. It's not just you, but everybody's running for the money from the federal government under pretenses of COVID for anything under the sun. Your responsibility is public safety, number one, not people's heating and air conditioning systems, et cetera, et cetera. So all that money that's probably going out for those kinds of things should be going So all that money that's probably going out for those kinds of things should be going into Douglas County Justice System. The frivolous programs, for example, that haven't made a difference, and the numbers are still going up, and we're sending people out back home because we don't want to really deal with it. But if we had to deal with all of them instead of sending them home, it'd be even higher, wouldn't it? We need to put the money there to keep the citizens of this town safe. And we might teach the kids something too. We didn't get to vote on that justice center. That money could have been part of this budget request. Thank you.
Anyone else? Next is a presentation by Douglas County Court on the department's 2022-23 budget request, which is 80,000 in excess of their budget targeted amount. And the requested amount total is 620,000. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. With me is Judge Stephanie Hanson. She's one of our bench. She's also going to be the next presiding judge. But more importantly, she sits on the Bench Bar Committee for our probate Bench Bar Relationship and Committee. The commissioners should have a presentation in your packet that I also brought some extra copies. The first, or what would be viewed as slide two, just gives you a little bit of background information on court-appointed attorneys, when they're used, the costs. And then we also talk about the decrease in participation for our probate division. And Judge Hanson will be able to talk more about the attorney's role in probate and the key, how that's key to the services that we provide to all the people in Douglas County. The next slide is a current attorney fee breakdown. Basically, we provide court-appointed attorneys for criminal and probate items. And the criminal items, that cost throughout the year has been right at 50% divided between criminal and probate. Since over the last five years, this has crept up to $200,000 in that single line item out of, right at a $500,000 budget. So that just gives you a breakdown of the fees and how they're broke out. The next slide that you have is attorney fees by judicial district. We surveyed the various judicial districts throughout the state. Douglas County is at $50 for criminal and $50 for probate. As you can see by the graph of what is paid in various counties for like services, you can see where Douglas County lies in, in that cost per hour. The next slide is just a news article that prompted probate reform several years ago, back in 2013. That really triggered a lot of legislative changes, a lot of statutory changes to safeguard guardians as well as their well-being, as well as their assets. And then the last slide is just a proposal and request. What the court is proposing is that we're going to leave the per-hour rate for criminal cases at $50. We get a lot of new graduates out of law school where that criminal, those criminal cases are kind of like a learning ground for them. And that's where they get a lot of their training and what have you. And what we would, what we are proposing is to increase just the probate court-appointed fees to $100 an hour. What's important is the fact that these fees haven't been addressed since 1999. And at that time, it went from $40 to $50. And so now, now with the increase in the training that's required for all the attorneys that are in probate, as well as the subject matter expertise that they bring to the table in those types of cases, we've actually seen a decrease in the participation of people who are willing, willing to be court-appointed attorneys for guardian ad litem. So with that, Judge Hanson, as well as myself, can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Did, did you want to say anything, Judge?
One of the things I'd just like to point out is, is really we have two different buckets.
Could you just state your name?
Sorry, I'm Stephanie Hanson, and I'm a county court judge here in Omaha.
Thank you.
Regarding the fees, I, I look at it as two different buckets. So we've got our criminal bucket and we have our probate bucket. And they're different for different reasons. And, and like Mr. Murtaugh said, the criminal fees, a lot of it's low-hanging fruit. It's your driving during suspensions. It's things that are repeat. They're, it doesn't take as much hands-on dealings as probate does. So, you know, listening to County Attorney Klein talk about the complexities, probate's just more complex. So some of the things that we see, for example, if a ward, so our vulnerable person that's being protected, if the guardian or conservator hasn't filed a report, we, we send them a notice. We kind of have a three-strikes policy. And on the third time, we say, okay, we need to appoint a guardian ad litem to make sure, are they still okay? What's going on? Why haven't we gotten a report? I've been on the bench since 2015. In that time, I can't even, there's more than a handful of times that we have later found out that someone's in a really bad place physically. They have been exploited financially by sometimes their own loved ones who have signed up to help them. So having a guardian ad litem and having a person who has chosen to go through the training that the state requires, that the Supreme Court requires at their expense, and to get, we have a list that we have to choose from. So anything that's appointed, whether, whichever bucket it is, they have to be on an approved list. The probate list is maintained by the state. The criminal list is maintained by the district court judges, and there's a committee. So right now, currently for Douglas County, we have 17 people on the list. And of those 17 people on the list, probably 10 of them are very active and take cases because they are involved. It means driving to people's houses, checking on them. It means that you're going to have to seek mental health services, sometimes for people cut through some red tape, have some, have some different skills to be able to, to navigate these things. And a lot of our guardian ad items end up turning into attorneys for the, the vulnerable person just because sometimes they need another level of care. I think a good safeguard for you all to know is that any fee application that comes in has to be given to Douglas County Attorney's Office. And so the Civil Division reviews what's been done. They have an opportunity to come in and object if the fees seem unreasonable. Because, again, we have such a limited pool when they go to the county attorney's office. Most of the time, they'll sign off on it because, again, we've got a good relationship and that, they have a good relationship. They've, they've earned that trust from the county attorney's office. So we don't have very many fee disputes that come before us. So with that, I, I think that it's only, it's only reasonable, again, to, I, I got sworn in in 2000. So this $50 has been around since before I was even a lawyer. So I, I think it's time to, to pay people commensurate with their experience. So thank you for letting us have the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
And thank you for this, Judge. We appreciate your input and the service that you provide to the people of Douglas County. It's been difficult during COVID to keep the courts open and running. And I know that the risks that you personally have run and those that work in the court, Mr. Murtaugh and others, because you're open to the public all the time, COVID or no COVID. So thank you for that, and we appreciate it. I think these numbers are justified. My question, I guess, would be comparative, comparing us to Sarpy County, Lancaster County. How do we look comparatively to other counties, you know, in the state, particularly the big urban counties of Sarpy?
That's a good question because we do lose some of the attorneys, like, you know, everybody has a capacity to take on so many cases. So when you pick up the phone and say, hey, person who's on the list who may also serve Sarpy County, because it's, we're so close, they're getting $125 an hour in Sarpy County, and you're getting 50 here. So again, it doesn't take much to say, I'll take the Sarpy case. I don't want to take the Douglas case because I can make almost three times more doing the Sarpy case. So that's our closest competitor.
And Commissioner, if you look at
Page four?
Page four. District two, District two consists of Cass, Odo, Sarpy. District three is Lancaster. And then probably District nine, which is Buffalo and Hall. Those would be our bigger counties that I believe you're asking about. But that's, that slide represents where we're at in, in that.
I appreciate that. And, and, you know, I'm the great, the greatest graph guy, so help me out here. But looking at this, are we last among these districts?
Yes, sir. And the county courts behind juvenile court and district court as well.
So we're the red line in that District four, so we're right at $50. There's nobody even close to that.
And it's in here someplace. But when's the last time an adjustment has been made in that?
1999.
1999, and it went from $40 to $50.
So that might be something that, going forward, we might take a bit of a look at. Have you found a practical difficulty in getting competent, competent attorneys to fill these positions because of this?
Yes, sir.
That's an important factor because, I mean, people without competent representation are compromised in their ability to get justice. So that's something that we should look at.
And as you know, as an attorney, we have two ways that we can appoint. We can appoint if someone wants an attorney, but if they have the means to pay for it, then we can order that the, as during that investigation, that if you find that the person has assets, instead of having the county pay, they can self-pay. But then there are also times that they, they're indigent and they, they need the county to pay. And so just making it reasonable because if the, you know, the same person can do the same work. And if the ward has assets, they might get their hourly rate of $250. But if they don't, they're getting, they're doing the exact same work and they're getting $50 an hour.
And you, as a judge, make that indigency inquiry to each and every person?
Yes, and it's a little different in probate because they're not necessarily standing in front of you swearing to what their job is and what their hourly rate. It's more of an investigation, looking through, are they receiving any, what is their income sources? What things do they own? And that's something we get a report on every year as just part of the normal reporting requirements anyway. So you, you have something to look at, but then once you appoint a lawyer or a guardian ad litem in there, they can relook at some of those things. Is there an asset missing? Is there something that could be turned to cash? Do they have a car that's been sitting in the garage that they could have turned into something to, to be able to pay?
Great. Thank you for this. I think this is very justified. And we might want to look at that going forward in terms of making an adjustment in that one category. And thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Next is our presentation by Geographical Information Systems of the department's fiscal year 2223 budget request, which is in amount over $43,803. The amount requested is $654,623. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, commissioners. Yeah. Thank you. It's like, yeah, I'm going to need that, aren't I? Give me just a second. No, 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 no. Don't do that. Yeah, I don't want that. That's what I want. There we go. Oops. Okay.
Is it zoomed now?
Yeah, it should be. It's just, Zoom's just minimized. I believe so.
Okay, good morning, commissioners. Thank you. Mike Seanlaw, Douglas County G.I.S. I've just got a few slides for you. I wanted to give you a quick update on a couple of our projects that are coming up over this next, this year and next year, to give you a little bit of framework for my budget requests. So one of the big things, one of the reasons I'm up here today is to request some additional funds for a large new G.I.S. platform that we're deploying right now. What that means is this is a new way that both county employees, city employees, and the public will be able to access some of our software and technology. So when we deploy something like this, there's some additional costs for software and, and system architecture that are required. They're kind of upfront costs. We hope, the intent would be to launch that this year and then next year be able to drop some of those costs down as a result of this. So that, that enterprise portal is going to be one of our big projects, and we'll see more of that in the future. I'll be able to do some presentations on that. A couple of the big projects we're working on, we've had some very good success early on with our projects for the county sheriff's office. We're pretty excited about that. I think the sheriff's staff are eager to use some of those tools. We've built some dashboards for them to look at their crime data, as well as crash data and soon warrants data internally for their own analysis and investigations. And then we're also getting ready to deploy a public crime dashboard for the county sheriff, where the public will be able to see some of that crime data in a little bit more limited fashion. Another project we're planning to work on is, is the next generation of our public map viewer, which has been around for 15 or so years now. And we're real excited about that, give some new functionality to the many hundreds of users that we have of that, of that tool every day. So this next bullet is kind of a mouthful, but I wanted to bring it up because it's one of the cool things we're doing kind of behind the scenes that I think is improving the information that departments have to use for their operations and for their decision-making. And it's also a way where we're actually saving money. We're using artificial intelligence or machine learning tools to build data that is helping departments. And this is data that in the past, county and city departments have paid contractors to produce for them. Or we've used staff out in the field to collect some of this data. So we're able to use some of these new tools to automatically create this with software, which is a big, big benefit to the departments that use this information and potentially safer and, and a cost savings along the way. We're also looking at an expansion of our drone program. We've had a lot of success over the past two years with our drone program, capturing imagery for various projects like road projects or stream and stormwater projects. Post-wind event, we did a lot of drone imagery for the windstorm that we had last year. We capture imagery for things like the College World Series and other events like that. And I'm going to give you a little example of one of the new features, our panoramics, which are, are a pretty cool byproduct that we can collect with this drone. And just a quick note on that, we, we set out with our drone program to really be above board on that. Basically, dot all the i's, cross the t's, make sure we're in compliance with FAA regulations, make sure that we are making everything, every flight we take visible to the public. So we have a publicly accessible website that displays everywhere where we go out and fly. Our people who go out and fly are certified pilots. They're identified. They make sure we talk with anyone. For example, we've, we've done some traffic study at schools, when schools let out, to help public works on the city side do some analysis of their traffic. And we always contact the principal of that school. We talk to some of the neighbors to make sure that they're comfortable with us being out there and, and they know. We talk to some of the neighbors to make sure that they're comfortable with us being out there and they know what we're doing. So that's been a really good program for us. And then we have a couple of big city projects that we've been working on. Our new Parks Finder for the Parks Department and Historic Landmarks Viewer, which is a really nice view of all the historic landmark features across Omaha for the Planning Department. So I have a couple of, just real quick demos of that. Let me go back here, just a sec. And bring up the... Yeah, so this is a couple of just quick screenshots of our sheriff crime dashboards. And I know you can't see all the details here, but basically, this is allowing the sheriff's staff to really drill down into crime data across their districts and get details that will help their investigations and basically, you know, cross-reference data across different areas, and there's a lot of different filters they can apply. And the public dashboard will have some of that similar capability. And we hope to enable it so residents or neighborhood groups can sign up for notifications. So if there are certain types of crimes that occur in their area, they would be able to get a notification of that. So we're excited about that. I mentioned the machine learning or the artificial intelligence. These are two quick examples of where we've used software to detect swimming pools across neighborhoods in the community. The county health department does inspections of swimming pools to make sure they're safe and they have fences and things like that, water quality. And those aren't always known to the health department. So we're able to use software to actually find those and produce a better inventory for them. The image on the right is a tree inventory, which is increasingly becoming important, especially with right-of-way trees and things like the Emerald Ash Bore that are, you know, causing dangerous trees to exist along right-of-ways. So this tree inventory is used by a number of people, but we're able to identify individual trees across the entire county, which is pretty valuable. And we're continuing to refine that, you know, where we can actually identify species of trees and things like that. So this is the example of the panoramic I wanted to show you. And so this was taken with our drone. This is of downtown. This is the Creighton campus we're looking at here. And you can see how nice of an image that produces, not only for just visual appeal, you know, for things like maybe the Chamber of Commerce would want to use something like this, but we're interested in working with, say, public properties to develop a panoramic of all this county campuses using this tool. And, you know, you can zoom in and get a lot of detail and things like that. So this is just one of the new features we can produce with our drone, and it's pretty powerful technology. Like I said, it's, it can be very useful for other things, actually operational, for things like doing inspections of bridges or doing inspections of traffic mast arms. Instead of sending someone out to a busy intersection, we're able to do this from above. So there are a lot of different potential applications of this. Okay, now, don't do the brass tacks here. I just have two slides, try to keep it very simple. My budget is fairly simple, but I wanted to point out a couple of things. This is our revenues, looking revenues, and as you can see, we are expecting an increase in revenue this year of about thirty-six and a half thousand. Our revenue primarily comes from the city of Omaha and Douglas County, as well as typical annual grant from MAPPA, which this year is projected to be about ten percent. So we are looking for an increase in that MAPPA grant. Our submittal to them was a little bit more than last year. And then also the city, we've done a little bit more work in this last year, so their share has gone up a bit. So we do expect an increase in our revenue, which leads me to the last slide, which is our expenses. So what I'm looking for today is an increase over our target of about forty-four thousand dollars. Thirty-six and a half of that is made up by our revenue increase, so I'm really looking for an increase of around seventy-three hundred. And the reasons for that increase are some of the new software licensing I mentioned, the system architecture costs that are going to go with that, and then some salary step increases that we have. The pie chart on here is a great example, or it's really a good way for me to illustrate how basic our budget really is. You can see that payroll makes up the bulk of our budget. And then we have system infrastructure, which is our cost for our servers and databases and things like that, and then the software that goes with that. Everything else in our budget is less than one percent. So I kind of, I try to pride myself of not having a lot of fluff in our budget, not a lot of cushion. The downside to that is I'm usually up here every year. If we have any variance in those other three things, I usually have to come before you. But I don't mind doing that, because I'm happy to talk about any of the line items in our budget. And I think the additional money we're asking for this year will pay for itself in the additional technology tools we can develop and data and tools that we can build for departments to hopefully run more efficiently. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. For this, relative to this drone thing, I'm kind of curious, how many drones do we have?
Our department just owns one drone. There are drones owned and operated by other departments, both county and city. I would say what sets us apart is we do a lot of the things that we're supposed to do, meaning we get the pilot certification, we respect the airspace restrictions that the FAA puts out, we communicate with all the places that we're going to fly to make sure they're aware. We've never had a crash or an errant drone flight to date, and we've had about a hundred and fifty of those flights so far. So we think we're doing everything to make sure that the public and our departments can feel confident that when we go out to collect it, we're doing it correctly and producing the data that they're looking for. I know sometimes we've had some stories from other departments where they've had a drone fly off or they've had it crash, or they were collecting imagery in an area that was restricted. And we're trying to avoid all that, make sure that we're on the up and up, and we've had a lot of success so far.
So when we fly this drone, do you pilot it from your office or do you go out in the field?
No, we have two of our, one of our staff is a certified pilot, and then we always have a spotter who has his pair of binoculars. Basically, you never lose eyesight of the drone. And he flies it from a little iPad. And we've actually are implementing some new technologies so our spotter can actually see what the drone is seeing on a camera on his phone. And we can collect data as that drone is going overhead, which is very, very powerful. And if you think of all the times you've been out in the community, say, a busy intersection, and you've seen a government employee on the side of the road or a utility worker, and you think about how dangerous that is, this is the kind of technology that can help alleviate some of those issues. Not only improve safety, but also collect the data better and faster. And so we're exploring more of that with various departments.
And do these drone flights, as you mentioned, have other applications? You mentioned the environmental applications of checking on trees and their health. What about revenue applications for, say, Board of Equalization, assessment of property values? You showed a picture of folks with swimming pools. Are they tied into that?
Not today, that could happen. I mean, there are restrictions on flying over people, but not over structures. And we don't want to make it seem like this is a Big Brother thing, we're spying on everyone. That's not the case. But there have been projects we've done where there've been reports of either code violation or zoning violation, and we've gone out and captured imagery to help make the case that this was a violation. We do have other projects that we've done. For example, the counties we control superintendent, we flew some drone imagery over the Lake Zarinsky area where they had sprayed for an invasive weed. And from the ground, you can only see so much. But with the imagery we captured, and then we did some follow-up analysis, we were able to show him on a map exactly where it was Fragmities was the weed that was, they were trying to get rid of. We were able to show him areas where the Fragmities still existed, and the spraying they did wasn't fully effective. And so that's something where he couldn't have seen that, just walking on the ground. And we were able to help him by producing some maps and data that helped him pinpoint where else he needs to apply those sprays.
Well, great, thanks for this. I think it's very justified expenditure, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Mike, and thanks for the good work you do. I know, I think our departments have underutilized GIS, and I like the idea that, and would actually suggest that maybe during one of the department head meetings, we have a presentation by GIS to let them know what tools and resources are there for their use. Because again, you do an absolute great job, so thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, no other budget presentations. We'll move on to Community Service Committee. There's two resolutions. Number one is a resolution to approve an interlocal agreement of the purpose of sharing building inspectors across jurisdictional boundaries. And Dave, do you want to give us just a brief summary of this?
Dave Forrest, planning and zoning coordinator for Douglas County. The issue before you today, or the first issue, is an interlocal agreement to share code inspectors across jurisdictional boundaries. I think everywhere in the Omaha metro region, we're experiencing a shortage of qualified inspectors. And one of the potential solutions we came up with in discussions with adjoining jurisdictions is just sharing folks. When, if you have someone who's out sick or out on vacation and you need somebody for a day or a particular inspection, you can just call up the jurisdiction and say, hey, can you send Joe over here tomorrow to do an electrical inspection? So it's as simple as that. It's, there's no money exchanged. We would assume that each jurisdiction assumes their own liability, and it's pretty much just a handshake.
Okay, any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
The other resolution is a resolution to adopt the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code and amendments and rescind the condemnation in dangerous buildings procedures.
So we've been having discussions with the Douglas County Planning Commission over the past several months about adopting the Property Maintenance Code, because we at the staff level feel it'd say a better tool than the current nuisance regulations that the county has, which are really based on state enabling statute that has to do with disease vectors, you know, stockyards, dairies, you know, junkyards, things like that. We believe that we have some situations in the county where the Property Maintenance Code is the tool to use for those specific circumstances. The city of Omaha has adopted the Property Maintenance Code, and I think for the very same reason that it's the right tool to use. And so we're suggesting that the county adopt the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code with the amendments that were discussed in the Planning Commission meeting and rescind two documents, which we think are, you know, out of date and can actually be better addressed through the Property Maintenance Code. That is the dangerous building procedure and the condemnation procedure. Both of those things are covered in the Property Maintenance Code.
Any questions or comments on this item? The only question I have is, adopting this, how do we, how does the public? Because again, this is going to affect property owners and business owners and such. How do we make them aware, instead of a, in a letter that, you know, hey, gotcha, because you're not following this and they know nothing about the change?
That's a good question. We could put a notice on the website. We could, that would be for starters. I'm open to suggestions. We could also send a letter to folks that are potential, you know, subjects of this enforcement that we've adopted this Property Maintenance Code.
I think the start of putting it on the website is a good idea. And again, it's mostly to make people aware, because a lot of times we change things and then they don't have any idea we've changed them. And we're out there, you know, kind of big bad government telling you that you violated this, and they don't even know the change has occurred. So I think the website is a good start. I think even for Western Douglas County, something in the Post Gazette, because everybody takes the Post Gazette out in Western Douglas County. So anyway, we can, we can kind of talk about other ideas, but that would be a good start.
Just so you're aware, this is really a small subset of properties that we're talking about relative to the entire Western Douglas County area.
No, but we get the calls.
I do too. Believe me.
Yeah, yeah, so the most we could be proactive, the better.
That's fine.
Yeah. Commissioner Friend.
Oh, thanks, Madam Chair. Dave, thanks for the information, and I, I actually did, I'm not, I'm not really a nerd. I think, maybe I'm not, maybe I am a nerd, I don't know.
Did we get a vote?
Let's vote on that, that's a resolution soon, I bet. I've actually read some of this, and part of the reason is because I've got not a great background in it, but we, I used to deal with IECC codes and all kinds of things that the state was actually forcing onto its local communities. The thing that always, the question I wanted to ask you, to piggyback on what Commissioner Borgeson said, it goes back to enforcement. I mean, these guidelines lay out some of the enforcement initiatives that we can put in place, right? So what I'd hate to do, it's my thinking out loud. The sheriff's department's busy enough, we're going to hear more about that later on. And the last thing I really want is to find out, a week and a half before the case, that there's going to be two deputies showing up at somebody's place in Northwest Douglas County or down in some other area of our county, and they didn't know. So what I liked about it is you guys are lay, these standards and these codes lay those things out, how that stuff's actually going to apply. Am I mistaken with that?
No, you're right. Sharing, sending a sheriff's deputy out is the last thing you do, right? You're going to, you're going to send out a notice of violation to the property owner. You'll probably send a second notice of violation if you don't hear from them or get some kind of compliance. And the last thing you would do is issue a citation.
My point is, I think I'm, in a weird way, kind of defending these standards, because they lay out process and procedure that will allow you to stair-step to, I wouldn't call it punishment, but adherence to certain guidelines that Douglas County decides that need to be upheld. These are just going to, these are just going to help that process. I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I agree.
Thanks, Dave.
Any other further questions or comments? Larry?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I want to go back to something you said a minute ago about the big bad wolf or something. And I just want to point out that there's a lot of other conservative, deeply conservative people on news sites that are talking about some things that it's not just my words. I'm going to give you an example, the World Health Organization. Everybody's in a Twitter now, because the World Health Organization is going to take over our constitution. And this may be true. Ties to this. Here we have another international organization. See, you interrupt me sometimes before I get to finish a sentence. Please don't do that.
I know.
International Organization for this, International Organization for that, and the best practices. Here we have something similar to... Here we have something similar to the UN, something similar to the World Health Organization, but it's international. I don't know who that is, but they're telling us, maybe me, what I can or can't do with my house. It's not you guys telling me that. It's somebody else. Oh, does that absolve you of responsibility? Maybe, maybe not. But when you wake up the next morning, you may not have a chance to change it. So, stop relying on people outside of this or this state, city, and county and do the job you were hired to do. Thank you.
If I can just respond to clarify, I think, I think the term international is really kind of a branding thing. This is, this organization, the International Code Council, I believe, is centered in Chicago. And the folks, and the way they develop these codes is it's, it's actually code officials in the United States meeting committees and they're the ones that drive this. So, it's not, you know, a cabal of international folks that are trying to impose something on the United States. They, these are firefighters and building inspectors and code officials who work on this year in, year out and make recommendations and that it gets adopted in the latest version of those codes.
Thank you. And, and again, I guess my, my biggest thing is just to make sure our citizens know what the change is because I'm still a little bit uncomfortable that it feels like we're kind of bringing in a hammer and I just don't want that to be the case. So, if we can let them know, that'd be great. With that, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is Human Resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. No legislative items at this juncture. And we do have need for an executive session for litigation, legal advice, and labor negotiations. Is there a motion to go into executive session for those purposes? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. And questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion passes four to zero. We are adjourned at one P M.